All right. Hello, my name is Megan Saffery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This is a meeting taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight's meeting is two workshops. One is on the Packwood Sub area plan and one on the RV Parks and Campgrounds Code Amendments. A reminder, the Zoom chat featured is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, but no public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Alves, Corbin, and Chastain. There are no planning commissioners present on Zoom, and Commissioner Fritsch and Commissioner Foster are absent. So with five planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. Could I please get someone on Zoom to verify that you can hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now ready to begin. Sheer spoken.
Thank you, Megan. My name's Laurie Spogen, and I'd now like to call to order the June 27th, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for tonight, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second from the commission to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with five yes votes.
Also, prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the June 13th, 2023 meeting. If there are no correction to the meeting notes, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as written.
I move to adopt the agenda. Meeting notes, excuse me.
Second.
Vote, please.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with five yes votes.
All right, moving on. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments? Just to note that the public comments are different than testimony. Any comments that the public wants to provide on an item that will come to Planning Commission for a vote should be submitted as testimony when the record is open. Megan, has anybody signed up to make a comment tonight?
Yes, we do have a couple of people who have signed up to provide comment. So I will call on people one at a time, and you will have three minutes to provide your comments. Please start by stating your name. Once you begin speaking, I will start the timer, which will be displayed on the screen. I will let you know when your three minutes are up, and you need to wrap up your comments.
Just to note, the public comment is not a discussion with the commission or the staff. The members of the public who want responses should talk with the staff after the meeting. All right, Megan.
Okay.
Question, question. Chair, are there restrictions on the comments, like they can't be about something that we're talking about tonight? Or is there anything like that?
Sorry. Mindy, would you answer that?
I cleared my throat oddly, like I wanted to interrupt, but I was just clearing my throat. Because there's no quasi judicial items on the agenda this evening, comments are completely open. People can comment on whatever they want, and we have alerted them that it's different than testimony. So these comments will not be retained as testimony on a specific subject. So if they want that, if they want these comments to live with that subject as part of the testimony, then they'll need to submit comments at that time. Otherwise, public comment is completely open right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Megan.
Okay, first up, we have Dana Jones.
Hello, Board. I am Dana Jones from Packwood, Washington. I have been a 19-year resident almost in about a month, and just wanted to make some comments about the rental situation there. There is a disproportionate ratio of short-term vacation rental properties in relation to owner-occupied properties, as you probably all know. The lack of affordable, long-term rentals in Packwood has a negative impact on local businesses being able to find and retain help, staffing help. When local staff can no longer live in an area where they work, additional traffic and commute time impacts the employee's quality of life and contributes to traffic congestion for all. Short-term rental units on septic systems may not be designed for the number of persons occupying the vacation residence. Of course, there are plans for a new sewer system in Packwood, but that goal has yet to be realized. And in the meantime, septic systems may be compromised. I asked the Planning Commission to consider adopting a framework of regulations for vacation rental properties that would do the following. Establish a fair tax commensurate with that of other Washington State jurisdictions that will assist impacted communities with public improvements to infrastructure, parking, and traffic control. Establish a licensing body and regulations to enforce occupancy limit, residence occupancy limit that does not exceed septic capabilities for the residents. I recognize that current rental properties were purchased prior to the existence of restrictions on property usage. I'm personally a rental owner myself, having three units and have had to adapt to rule changes in other areas. Thank you for your time.
Before I call the next person up, I am just going to move the podium because those on Zoom cannot see it where it is currently located. So we tried to move you closer so you could see the commissioners, but we're going to put you back a little bit so the Zoom people can see. Okay, next we have John Hess.
Hello there. Okay, I was here last week. I'm just beginning to get familiar with these issues. One of the things I prepared here was a two-page memo with a little sketch on the back. Then I included a copy of something called the State of Washington Office of the Attorney General's Advisory Memorandum and Recommended Processes for Evaluating Proposed or Administrative Actions to Avoid Unconstitutional Taking to Private Property. Now, right now, within Washington State, we have the Washington State Growth Management is stomping all over our constitutional rights to our property. We have got to start fighting back against this. One of the things I'll probably be proposing to the bigger council meeting, the one that that has the county supervisors in it, is to override the Growth Management Act requirements until the housing shortage in the county has been solved or has been alleviated some. This I would define by having a minimum of 100 lots in the county for sale under $50,000. That, right now, I went down to a real estate agent a couple of weeks ago. We have approximately 34 lots in this county for under $100,000. Most of them are swamp or hillside or wetlands. We cannot afford to do that. We've got to have people have a decent place to live. Okay? So if you look at the sketch on the handout that I gave you, you'll see what you can do for an RV lot with a two-acre property. Now, right now, your proposal is for a two-and-a-half-acre property. You don't need that much. Two acres will provide you plenty of room for 11 RVs along with plenty of room for septic. I gave a copy of this to Mr. I think I spelled your name wrong, sorry about that. But he should be able to answer any areas where this thing violates existing safety codes. I'm not talking about zoning regulations. I'm talking about public health issues. Is there enough room for a sewage system? Are the septics and wells separated by enough? You know, do you have fencing and all that stuff? That's what we need to look at and quit trying to restrict property that without a good purpose. One of the issues that you guys addressed last week was how to deal with RVs that exceeded 180 days stay in their lot. This is for, I guess, for temporary RVs. Doesn't sound like it's that big a deal. If an RV can move, it can pump septic, it can hook up electrical power and take water. That's all it needs to be able to do. Make them prove that every 180 days, and you're good. Okay, that's all they should have to do. Otherwise, keep the county out.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, that's everyone who has signed up in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to provide public comment? Okay, I see none.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking up tonight, both of you. We appreciate the thought and the effort that it takes to come and talk with us. So tonight's first workshop is the workshop on the Packwood Sub Area Plan. And as you might remember from other meetings, we aren't able to discuss it amongst the visitors tonight, but it's a good opportunity for you to take notes and have quite and we'll answer any questions that you come up with tonight in a different way. The purpose of the works session is for the staff to present information about the topic and the commission to ask questions. There won't be any public comments on the proposal during the workshop. Public comment should be provided as testimony when the record is open, which is expected in late August. All right, Mindy.
Thank you, Commissioner Spogen. Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner. So again, this is a workshop tonight on the Packwood Sub Area Plan. No action tonight on this. This is again just informational, keeping you guys up to date on what the Advisory Committee has been talking about and the recommendations that they're bringing forward. We do have a couple of members of the Advisory Committee, I noticed, on Zoom this evening. So not only can you ask questions of me, but if you want to ask questions of the Advisory Committee, they are there, and I can call them out if you want to do that. So next slide, please. I am going to start again with a background and a high level. I know you guys are hearing similar information every time, but we do have new participants on Zoom every time, and I want to make sure that they have the same sort of background information. So we are going to start there. Then we will be discussing short-term rental policy. So that's the topic we talked about with the Advisory Committee last week. So that's what we'll cover. They also talked about some other policies. We'll go through those and then next steps. Again, stop me at any point if you guys have questions. Next slide. So, big picture, big reminders. A sub area plan is a long-range, 20-year vision, goals, and policies that is intended to manage growth and development in Packwood. That's what a sub area plan is. Next slide. The sub area plan is going to be completed in two phases. We are in phase one. Phase one is the vision, goals, and policies, so big lofty stuff. Phase two is implementation. So policies, goals, they need to be implemented primarily through changes to zoning designations and development regulations. That's phase two. Until phase two is adopted, there's actually no impact on new development in Packwood. It stays as it is and it has it as it has been until we adopt phase two. So phase one doesn't actually affect change. Next slide. Phase one is anticipated to be adopted this fall. So we will come back with hearing with you guys and then head over to Board of County Commissioners for adoption of phase one. Phase two is anticipated to start then really right as soon as we're done with phase one and be adopted in summer 2025. So we're looking out till probably fall 2025 before there's actually any noticeable change in Packwood as a result of the sub area plan. Next slide. Where does it apply? The neighborhoods of High Valley and Timberline and Goat Rocks and all of those are not included in the sub area plan boundary. So any policies and the resulting implementation, those development regulation changes would only impact the lands within the sub area plan boundary. It's really important that people remember that. Of course, people live in those other neighborhoods and care a lot about what happens in Packwood. So they're absolutely on the Advisory Committee. They're absolutely invited to participate. We want them to participate. I just want to make sure it's clear that the direct impact will be within that plan boundary only. I'm not going to read all this. Again, I put it here because then it's in the presentation. So in the future, if anybody wants to download the presentation, they have all the details. But the bottom line is, this plan is about creating affordable housing, providing services for people who live in Packwood, including families and people who are aging in place, encouraging job growth, not just tourism-based, but supportive jobs like electrician, plumber, mechanic, and preventing sprawl into the outlying areas so that those areas remain rural. And we focus the, any future development, like stores and shops in that downtown area of Packwood. That's kind of the bottom line. What does it not do? The sub area plan does not drive growth. A plan like this does not actually drive growth. Growth and development is already happening, and it will continue to happen. Infrastructure will drive growth. So the sewer, when it comes here, will be a driver of growth, and it's important to have the policies, the goals, and the regulations in place to manage that when it comes. Next slide. Okay, so this is the 20-year vision statement. It's big, huge, but this is what the Advisory Committee plus all those other community involvement activities that we did, open houses and surveys, all of this culminates into this huge vision. So Packwood is a vibrant, small town that embraces its history, encourages unique local businesses, provides a diversity of affordable housing options, supports existing and new residents, preserves the natural environment, encourages tourism, and promotes community events. Huge, lofty, right? So we have a whole bunch of policies that dive into it, and you'll remember that. We went through those last time. Next slide. I just have a high-level list. So these, the goals and the policies that are broken into these different categories are the things that clarify and define and help guide the future. There are dozens. You'll remember that from looking at the plan, dozens and dozens of policies in there. You guys have had the plan since December. The public has had the plan since December. It's been online. Copies have been at the Packwood Library. So I'm really hoping everyone's familiar with those, and I don't have to pull out the plan to set things in context. But I wanted to remind you of that because the policies that we're going to be talking about tonight live in the context of all the rest of those policies. Right? So we have policies about affordable housing and policies about job growth and so forth. Those are in there. So it's, we're not trying to recreate everything here. These will slide into context of what's already in the in the plan. Next slide. Little bit of a reminder about where we've been. So there was a public hearing on March 14th. It was at the Packwood Community Hall. You received 22 pieces of written testimony and 10 people provided oral testimony. The testimony was primarily in support of the plan, but there were a few requests. So on March 28th, at the continued hearing, you asked the Advisory Committee to reconvene and to address three subjects. Land use property, or land use or properties around the airport, the historic mill land uses, and short-term rentals. Next slide. Quick reminder about our Advisory Committee. So the Advisory Committee is made up of 35 members of the Packwood community. You received bios for each of them, so you're aware that they have a lot of relevant knowledge and experience. We have a really good group of Advisory Committee members. They met January through December of 2023, every month for two hours, to produce the draft plan that you guys got in December. I just want to reiterate how grateful I am for them giving up time. Yes, Frank. Hit your microphone.
Sorry, 2022?
We met once in 2022. You are right.
Okay, so it's only June of 2023. So they're going to continue meeting monthly then through the rest of this year?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That should say 2022, not 2023. Thank you. We're not going to, no, everyone online, no, I'm not asking you to continue meeting. They might have panicked. Thank you for clarifying that. But I am so, so grateful for the dedication and the time that these people have put forward to this plan. It's all volunteer. It's really great. They did agree to three more meetings. So we have had three more meetings since the close of their official time. Yeah.
Thank you for indulging me one more.
That's okay.
But the two gentlemen that gave us public comment tonight, are they aware of the Community Advisory Committee?
One of the gentlemen is not here for Packwood. I don't, Dana? Yeah, you are.
Aye.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you been a participant?
No. Okay. Yeah, he's not a participant on the Advisory Committee, but again, just, you know, we had a lot of other opportunities as well. We've had multiple open houses, attended lots of meetings, had a few community surveys too. So we've tried to provide a lot of opportunity for people, even if they couldn't give us that every month commitment, because that is a lot of commitment to, as you guys know, since you're here every other week with us. So you know, it's a big commitment. So we're done. I've already provided updates to you guys on a couple of their meetings. So tonight, we're going to just focus on short-term rentals and then a few outstanding policies. So is there any questions about like the overview, the background, any more about Advisory Committee before we dive into the details? Nope, we're good. Okay. Um, so let's move in. Here's the good stuff. So you received testimony back on March 14th at the public hearing about short-term rental concerns. You directed the Advisory Committee to consider a short-term rental policy within the plan. Again, remember, this would only apply to that boundary. Right? So any policy that's in this plan would not apply to Lewis County. It would not apply to the neighborhoods that are located outside that plan boundary. It's a Packwood-specific thing. The Advisory Committee actually recommends two policies. I'm going to read them, and then I'm going to give you their thoughts and concerns about it, and then, and then we'll pause, and you can ask me questions. So there are two new ones, and these would sit within the housing and land use goals. So the first one would sit within the housing goals. Ensure an appropriate balance of residential housing and short-term rentals to support people's ability to live in Packwood. So that'd be a new housing goal added to the ones that are already there. The second would be a new land use goal. Within the mixed use and residential high, that's, if you'll remember, that's the red on the map and the dark purple on the map. Require newly-built multifamily housing such as triplexes, row houses, and apartments to be provided for long-term residency, including seasonal rentals. Seasonal meaning like three to six months versus year releases. So if these are adopted, in phase two, we would need to implement them. That means we would need to determine in phase two what is an appropriate balance. We're not answering that here. This is policy. So phase two would take a big level of work. What is an appropriate balance between long-term and short-term for the Packwood boundary? What the policy means, if it's adopted, is that this is something that should be determined during phase two. So, you know, when people say, well, why put a policy in here if you're not going to answer that question? Because it's saying, answer that question. And that's what would happen during phase two. I will say that just from a planning perspective, finding an appropriate balance is an extremely challenging endeavor. Right? Because any way you look at it, there will be winners and losers in that, but that would be the next step in phase two. The second policy, much more specific. This one is based on the fact that multifamily housing is really only going to be allowed to happen where that sewer goes in. So we're really just talking about the downtown area. Because if there isn't multi, or if there isn't sewer, you can't have multifamily housing. The sewer can expand over time, but it's going to be primarily downtown for now. So it made sense to the Advisory Committee that that multifamily could be preserved for long-term residency, and that would really focus in that downtown area. The majority of the Advisory Committee agreed with both of these policies, but there were a few concerns, so I want to highlight those for you guys. For the first policy, there was a concern that regulating short-term rentals takes away people's freedom to use their property as they see fit. So a basic property rights question there. But that same comment was backed with an acknowledgement that there needs to be something done about short-term rentals. So, you know, people feel both ways about this thing. The second policy, there was actually a request that it also include the residential medium, which was the lighter purple on the map in this. However, it didn't get included because multifamily in this first phase is probably just going to be the mixed use in the residential high areas. And none of these policies live forever and ever and ever. We've talked about five years from adoption is probably the right time to come back and check it. So if sewer expands, we could readjust, right? There could be another thought about that. So I'm going to stop there. Those are the primary concerns that were brought up, and just see if you guys have any questions, comments, thoughts.
I'd love to see the map. I wish I brought it with me, but do you have the map handy?
Sure, I'll pull it up. Yep, I'll pull it up in the share screen.
My memory tells me it's kind of just the core of the town. And so are we talking basically about new buildings, not existing?
We are always talking about new buildings in this, new development.
Okay, so existing little homes that are currently on short-term rental in the Packwood Core are not going to be affected.
That is correct. They would be vested under the current regulations. Any other, I'll bring up the map here, but were there other comments as I bring that up?
I just wanted to ask. How far out are you looking for sewer expansion?
There is not an answer yet on that. So the engineering is still being done, looking at property acquisition. There's a bunch of issues that they're trying to figure out, so there is not a determination. It will be generally in the area of that downtown, sorry, I just got distracted by trying to share a screen, and I can't do two things at the same time. So just to say. Okay, there's the map. So the red is mixed use, and the darker purple is the high. So you see the mixed use is the downtown core area there, right around Highway 12. And then there's a little pocket of high-density residential that extends out along Main and Willamette there. And then the other pocket of high-density residential is behind the commercial at the mill. So the mill has commercial along Highway 12, high-density behind it, and then medium-density behind that as a wrap. So it would be the dark purple and the red in that policy where there would be the focus on multifamily being preserved.
Mostly buildable?
It's, yeah, so the big buildable, of course, is the mill site, right? That's the huge buildable area. There are a number of what I would call missing teeth in the downtown core. So if anybody has been out to the flea market, as you're walking along the downtown core, every single one of those lots where all of the flea market is located, those are undeveloped lots. Right? So when sewer comes in, those become an area that could redevelop over time. So, yeah, there's a lot of missing teeth in the mixed-use area that can be filled in.
But different critical area issues are not diluting the buildable area too much?
Not in the mixed-use area. The majority of the critical areas are going to be in the pink. So there's a lot of floodplain that taps into that pink area. The other area of critical areas, actually, in the mixed use, it's up in that top corner that's got the hatch over it. So the hatch is an open space designation. That is the stream, Hall Creek, that goes across the Packwood Station property. So the idea is to preserve that in an open space. So that, there is critical there. But that portion of it is not developable anyway. The rest of the Packwood Station site is redevelopable. Okay.
So I had a question about, obviously, this policy, the short-term.
Excuse me, who, excuse me, who is speaking?
Sorry, this is Kylie Gustafson. Am I able to ask questions or not?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, you aren't able to ask questions tonight. This is just a workshop that the commissioners are being educated by the staff, and we are allowed to ask questions of the staff. But if you just take notes on what question that you have, you can talk with the staff later or talk with them tomorrow at work, and they will answer those questions. We will, we'll get to whatever you need to know. Thank you.
Okay. So there's not going to be any more conversation about what the short-term policy actually means, because it's just a statement. There's not really no backup about what it actually means and why it was developed.
Yeah, no, you don't have that option tonight. We're just getting educated. But there'll be a time coming up where we will be able to do that. But if you want to But if you want to uh, send anything to Mindy that might help clarify something for you uh, or us, uh, you're certainly free to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for interrupting.
That's okay. Yep. Uh, my information is at the end of this and is all over any materials you look at out in packwood. So please feel free to reach out to me and ask questions. The opportunity to provide comment to the planning commission and to, and that would really come as testimony is going to be when the record is open. And so we'll talk about the schedule at the end. Other questions from commissioners on the short-term rental pieces? You guys clear on like what, if these go through, what it takes in phase two? What it means? I want to make sure everybody's really clear on that. We have to implement the policies. Right? That's part of growth management. You have a policy, you must implement it.
Yeah, I'm okay with the policies as I have seen them. Uh, I just know that there's, like you say, it's going to be a tall order to get, you know, the um, uh, the balance worked out there. And so I, I'm assuming that you're going to in, employ the uh, the uh, community action committee again uh, for feedback or, you know, I mean, you don't have to tell me what you're going to do. But you know, I, I, I trust that you're going to get as broad input as possible, because that's the way you do it. So.
Yeah, we will. So the advisory committee will be offered the opportunity to stick with us to phase two. If they're exhausted, that's okay. They're allowed to decide that they need to step back. But we will invite the advisory committee to stick with phase two and we will open it up to anyone else who wants to participate. It won't be the same type of thing where we meet as routinely. It's going to be a little bit different and I haven't scoped out the specifics of it. But it will definitely be an open process where people be invited to participate on something like the advisory committee. And there will be additional open houses, surveys, et cetera, to make sure we get a broad brush. The other option is, I am a hundred percent available to just sit down and have coffee with people. And I've done a lot of that, just to take people's input in, bring that back to advisory committees. So want to make sure people take advantage of that too.
Mindy, did you have any uh, discussions or did the committee have any discussions? Or was anybody um, available on the committee that had knowledge about whether builders would likely take advantage of this? Will it, would this be prop profitable?
In terms of the multifamily.
If they were only allowed to rent them out full-time as opposed to uh, building something else in then, you know, out of the area that.
Yeah, long-term rentals, not as profitable as short-term rentals. That is, that is a base.
Was there anybody there that has, you know, um, construction or development um, input that said, yo, I, I think you could do that or no?
So we didn't do a pro forma approach to this, to figure out like penciling out on different sites and so forth. Once sewer is in, the sites will pencil out for redevelopment and multifamily will be the option. So if you're facing highway 12, we already have policy in there regarding ground floor, commercial, second-story multifamily. So if you're going to redevelop in that downtown core and you're facing highway 12, that's what you're looking at. Now, is it more profitable to be long-term versus short-term? It's more profitable to be short-term. That's one of the reasons why we're in a housing crisis, because people are not producing long-term rental very much. So a lot of what you're seeing coming down from the state and what you're seeing in here is forcing it.
Well, that's what I just wondered. If you'd put in your sewer and they, and they won't.
I think it will come anyway. I think it will absolutely come anyway, because those will become very prop profitable. We've had developers inquire about sites. Without sewer, they're not going to do it. The issue is it's not as profitable.
But somebody said they would.
Yes, we've had a couple of the sites that have been opened up for sale down there and I won't uh, share any details because it's, you know, we don't want to relinquish what people are thinking, but a couple of the properties that have opened up. There have been developers interested in those, but what they would be looking at is mixed-use development. So ground floor, commercial, second-story multifamily, can't do it without sewer. So I think once we get sewer in, you're going to see some of that. So I think it's possible. It's just that it's not as profitable.
Yeah. Yeah. I just wondered if it actually would accomplish your goal of providing housing for the employees of the people that want to work in the, in the area.
We certainly hope so, but it's a lot across the finger and see what the mar- markets do, right?
All right. Go ahead.
Anything else from you guys on short-term rentals before?
Mindy, did I send you an article? Did I remember sending you an article on Astoria's short-term housing?
Yes.
I only mentioned that because I was reading about another community dealing with short-term housing. It was in, I don't know, the Seattle Times or something. And I think about sending these things. I apologize Gretchen. Guy, I almost had the send button to Gretchen, but then I realized, oh, I should send this to Mindy and she filters it. But I guess what I'm getting at is I like the policies as driving actions. I like actions. And I saw one and I appreciate you speaking to goals versus policies and the differentiation, because in uh, on the airport, there was a policy that the CAC wanted to add and I thought it was so thoughtful. It was a policy to discuss the purchase of any properties near the airport that came available. And I thought, wow, that's a great idea. So it was nice to hear that it's a policy, sort of this action thing that when they become available. Anyway, I digress. So I like what I'm seeing with uh, the policies moving forward, that the CAC has come back and answered on the big uh, industrial site and the airport. And I like what I'm seeing here. Excuse me.
I, I hate to jump back in uh, Mindy, but maybe I'll ask this question. It may be appropriate now. You mentioned in your um, beginning sections that one of your goals was to prevent sprawl. And I thought when you mentioned that, do you, do you have, did you do any discussion about whether the uh, enforcing the short-term rental regulations specific just to these areas might create sprawl because it's going to push people out to the areas where they can do what they want?
Yeah, no, it's not, because I mean, the way that really sprawl is defined is housing density. So it's not really the use type. And so outside of spaces like lammards, you're looking at one house on five acres with an ADU and those can both be short-term rentals. And so I don't know that, that this really has any bearing on that. The intention of containing sprawl really is bore out by the land use plan. So it focuses the more intense amount of development into that downtown core, the mill site really tightens it up. Instead of letting things like commercial shoot out all over the place, which is what the small-town mixed use allows to do now. So yeah, I don't really think this has.
Thank you.
It could have a impact on the market, not necessarily sprawl, but it could have an impact on the market.
Okay.
Sure. Uh, I saw Gretchen hand those up.
Yeah, I'm, this is just kind of a, a bigger question and, and maybe something the other commissioners could help me understand, because I am, I'm not a developer and some of you are, but are we just forced to accept that single-family residences are no longer considered an affordable option for a family? Is a, a family or somebody making under a certain amount of money just have to be tucked away in an apartment or a duplex? Like is there? I realize that capitalism is a thing.
Right, but you, I mean, you are asking the statewide slash west coast dilemma. How do we make single-family housing affordable again? I mean, this is a huge conundrum. And it's not an issue that packwood's going to take on certainly. Um, so we're just trying to focus just on the pieces that packwood can do, but it's a ma- it's a monumental issue. So you're absolutely right. And, and we want, I think everyone from the state down to every level of government wants to figure out how we can make sure people can live in single-family residential as well as all other options.
I've said on numerous occasions that for people that live in other areas, Lewis County is affordable housing. Okay, I lived in Seattle. A house that I had that now would cost me nine hundred thousand dollars if I lived there now, or, or if I wanted to buy it and move back into it, it'd be a nine hundred thousand dollar house. Here, a comparable house of the same size would be about five to six hundred thousand dollars. So for somebody selling a million-dollar house in California and coming up here and snatching up a five hundred or a six hundred thousand dollar house in Lewis County, to them, Lewis County is affordable. So when we're defining affordable housing, we need to be careful that we're not just, you know, uh, what, what do we mean by affordable housing? Lewis County standards of, of affordable housing are much different than those who are moving in from out of town and from out of state. So, you know, what is our definition of affordable housing?
Yeah, so I can, I can provide that, but I don't want to go down this rabbit hole too much because.
I did a rabbit hole last week. Can I do another one this week?
I'm going to pull us out just a little bit, because there is so much more coming on housing. Um, because this isn't something that we can tackle in the packwood suburbia plan. We have to tackle it at a county, state, west coast way of doing it, right? So we do have quite a bit more coming. You guys are going to get another update on our rural housing alternatives. And then the comp plan, we have so much mandated at us now around affordable housing. So just so much more coming on that one. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold, see if we can hold that one again and we'll see if there's other specifics. Did I, did Gretchen drop off? Or she just started the top? Oh, okay. Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. I, it's so weird looking at the screen. Did you, I sort of interrupted you. Was there other? Did you want to say more about the short-term rental piece? Cause I know this, this one particularly hits home because you're out there.
Yeah, no, I think, I think between the two new policies you've addressed, I'm assuming that there's going to be some regulation on short-term rentals based on this balance language. There's going to have to be something some line drawn somewhere. So I'm, I appreciate that being in there. I thank you all for coming back with, with just simply the word, short-term rental in the plan. I think that's a really big, great first step. And I want to thank you for that.
Anything else on that before we move? Okay. Let's move to the next one. So at the May, we had an open house in May. So this was an open house for the public to attend. It was also a listening forum. We set up a bunch of desks where people could talk directly with the advisory committee members and bring up topics with them. We, out of that, there were a number of things that, that came up. A lot of them were land use and they've been addressed or discussed and determined not to do something. And that's, that's all um, in the notes and, and already reflected in that map I showed you. And we've discussed most of it already. But there were a few uh, topics that came back sort of at policy level. And so the advisory committee went ahead and had a conversation about those last week. So I want to present those options to you. And then there was the airport piece. So let's start with the airport. That actually wasn't out of the open house. That was, that, this came out of the conversation that we were having around the land use piece of it. So we discussed again, uh, policy around the airport. What this would be is a revised policy. So there's already a policy that says support continued use of the packwood airport. The revision would be to add and prevent incompatible land uses and development surrounding the airport when practicable. That includes acquisition. So prevent incompatible includes, when possible, purchasing land. So there are lots of ways to prevent incompatibles. That's the airport recommended change to policy. I'm just going to keep pausing to see if there's any questions before I bounce.
You, you'll have to clarify that. Who's going to purchase the land?
Uh, in this case, it's the county who uh, owns and operates. So if we were going to purchase property, it would be the county purchasing it.
I see. When something comes up in adjacent to the airport, your policy would be to purchase it.
No, the policy would be to prevent incompatible land uses and development and an option would be to purchase. Because purchase, purchasing land is, it's not just going to be any land. It's going to be very specific, like for a particular reason. So yeah, so that's an option of a way to implement it. Yeah. Okay, I'll move to the next one. So this, these uh, last couple did come out of the open house. So um, fire and EMS, emergency services. This was discussed uh, by a number of people at the open house. There's a lot of concerns, I think countywide. There's a lot of concerns about adequate services. So two things. One, it was to revise a transportation goal. So there was already a transportation goal in um, in here. And so it's improve the existing streets and add streets near downtown packwood to improve neighborhood connectivity and emergency vehicle access. So it did say add new streets. Advisory committee wanted to make sure that we were including improving the existing um, streets. There's a lot of unimproved right-of-way in, in packwood. So the other one is a new policy. Provide adequate emergency services and facilities to serve existing and new residents, businesses and visitors. This actually directly mimics something in our comprehensive plan for the whole county. We require adequate services. But this is more of an emphasis that it is important in packwood. So these are two new, or one revised, one new around fire and EMS. Any questions about that?
I don't think this is a rabbit hole, but you know, and providing adequate emergency services. I just took an extended tour of a fire district in Lewis County today, believe it or not. And that fire district has some severe shortcomings. If it is indicative of other fire districts in the county, we have a huge issue that needs resolving. The nine-one-one system, is that part of emergency services? You know, empty fire halls that we have no volunteers to man, no funding to pay for staff. You know, we've got growth that's happening out there. One of the things I was a proponent of was, you know, making sure if we're, you know, planning for development out in packwood, I mean, and, and you say it's happening, I, I believe you. You know, but we've got to do something about emergency services to keep up with the demand. When more and more people uh, go out in the woods, there's going to be more and more need to send people out to rescue people. You know, uh, traffic accidents, as traffic increases on and on and on she goes. So um, if we're setting a policy to provide, then who are we committing to pay for it, you know, and to provide it? You know, I guess that's, that's one big flag that runs up the flagpole for me.
Sure. Yeah. So we, again, a little bit of a rabbit hole here. So we're going to, we're going to, I'm going to again postpone some of this conversation, because this is a comprehensive plan conversation for Lewis County. And like I said, this mimics, we are required under growth management to demonstrate adequacy of service when you go through development. So we have adequate public facility form that gets filled out when you're doing things. So it is something that is required in order to, to develop. Huge issues that we have to deal with. You're absolutely right. So I'm going to kind of put a pin in that one again. We've got a whole bunch countywide to look at coming up. Not going to solve it just here.
I was going to caveat what Mindy said just a little bit. We don't have to show adequate facilities for every development. So uh, your single-family residence on an existing lot does not have to be proven to have adequate facilities. That's state code, um, Lewis County codes like that. So um, adequate facilities is for larger developments, new subdivisions, commercial development, industrial development, things like that is where we have to prove that.
But there's a lot more to come. Yeah, thank you for that caveat. That's an important, very important distinction. But um, I believe this will be a huge issue as we get into comp plan. Okay. Oh, yep. Gretchen?
Well, I, I put my hand back down, but Preston um, in following up on his caveat there, is there not a number of, is there not a threshold of residents or like a certain number of single-family residents permits that you all give out? That it's like, whoa, we just gave out seventy last year. We're reaching capacity for our fire department. No?
No, we don't have that. So currently our um, growth management and our rules and also the districts themselves do not have adopted levels of service. So this will be part of our comp plan conversation is if we need to adopt levels of service, which is thresholds. Right now, it is, for lack of a better term, professional judgment that, that services are not adequate. And it's good professional judgment. These are smart people. We're asking. It's not like they don't know what they're talking about. But there's no adopted threshold um, that we can turn to in our county. There are in other counties and cities. Okay, the last one was related to noise. So we had a, a conversation um, about noise. And this one real, I have to say, this one really comes from concerns about the noise. concerns about the noise level from um, the racing that takes place at the uh, mill. And on our advisory committee, our people who participate in that and organize that. So we had a nice robust conversation about that particular issue. We landed on this policy of preserve the rural atmosphere of Packwood by limiting artificial noise and light. So this is a more overarching, not targeted approach. It's very likely that when the Packwood Mill redevelops, racing will go away. So that's not likely a long-term use there. It's a near-term um, issue. And as Preston pointed out at the meeting, we already have a noise ordinance that they should be following. Little hard to enforce that far away from where we get people out. The sheriff's department is the one that enforces that. But um, so it's a, it's a more overarching. We ended up moving from noise to having a more of a conversation around lighting and things like dark skies initiatives that preserve night skies. So you can see the stars. So it, it really morphed more into a preserving rural character by thinking about lighting and noise and less about a targeted um, specific noise issue. But that's how this one kind of evolved. Questions about that? Okay, so that is the end of the policies that are going to come into the plan. Let's talk about steps, next steps. So remember, we've already gone through and then we came back around. So we've had two workshops. This is your second workshop. We're actually going to have a third. So on August eighth, that will be back in front of you. And I'm going to go, I'm just going to walk through the whole plan. And it's going to have all the updates in it. So these policies will be in it. The land use map will be updated. There's some facts in there about existing conditions that have changed since December. So it's going to have a bunch of changes. So I'm, on August eighth, I'm going to walk through the whole plan again with you and give you another opportunity to ask any other questions um, at that point. And then we would like to move to public hearing. So let's look at the dates. So we've already had our twenty-third workshop. This is the workshop on the twenty-seventh. Workshop on the eighth. September twelfth is your tentative public hearing in Packwood at the community hall. So um, at least two weeks before that, we'll do the notice of hearing. Notice of hearing goes in the newspaper. We post it um, on Facebook. We send it out to our email address. I put physical signs around Packwood. So we really want to make sure everyone's aware of this opportunity to provide testimony. Um, so as soon as that notice goes out, which again is a couple of weeks before the hearing, everyone is invited to submit written testimony. So we really encourage people to submit written testimony and then the twelfth will be the opportunity for oral testimony. Again, hearing tentative still, we haven't actually officially scheduled it. It's not official till that notice of hearing goes out. Um, we'll be at the Packwood Community Hall at six PM September twelfth. And I'll just put this last slide up here, have Megan put less up here with my contact information. That if you scan the QR code, that's the webpage. All materials are on the webpage. And then that's me if anybody has questions. Anything else from you guys? Process questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mindy. We look forward to continuing forward on this. There's a lot of questions and that need to be answered. It's hard when a community is in transition, the way Packwood is. It was a, you know, a lumber town or a logging town at one point. They left and it became a affordable town in a beautiful area. And now it's kind of a vacation town in a be. So the old law of supply and demand is hitting in. It's hard to, it's hard to overcome, but we're going to try. So tonight's second workshop is amendments to the RV parks and campground code. Uh, once again, a reminder that there will be no public comments or questions on the proposal that this is a workshop and the members of the public that have questions about the amendments should reach out to the staff after the meeting or tomorrow at work. Mindy?
I'm going to take that one actually. Commissioner spoke.
Very good.
Yes, no problem. Uh, Preston Pinkston, planner with community development. Um, so just a quick background, we provided staff report on June second, which included the proposed code amendments. Went over the proposed changes during our, we went over the proposed changes during our first workshop on June thirteenth. All of those materials are posted online uh, for the public to review and a link was sent to each of you guys. Uh, tonight we are going to focus on the questions you had at the last workshop and address questions that you sent to us between June thirteenth and tonight. First, we'll go over a high-level reminder about the current Lewis County codes related to RVs. Then we will talk about what we're trying to solve and just as important for this code, what we are not attempting to solve. We will remind you about what is changing with the code amendment and finally um, our next steps. Uh, feel free to ask questions at any time. Next slide. Oh, got it. Megan's on it. All right. Um, so let's start with the current rules about RVs. Uh, we came up with two diagrams, which are on the following slides to help you understand how RVs can be used in Lewis County under our current codes and if the proposed changes to RV parks and campgrounds are adopted. The first diagram is based on how a person may want to use their own RV. The second is based on how a person may want to use their property uh, as it relates to RVs. Okay, let's say you have an RV and you plan on using it to travel and camp. In Lewis County, you can stay on private property for less than sixty days. So you can camp on your own property for sixty days, or you can camp on a friend's property for sixty days. Um, those are actually consecutive days in our current code. So it's a, I forgot to mention that in, in my notes, but there are sixty consecutive days. Uh, the second option is for, for camping is to stay in an RV park up to a hundred and eighty days. Again, those are the current regulations. If you have an RV that you want to rent out as a short-term rental, then on your private property, you can offer no more than one RV for less than thirty days. If you plan on renting out two RVs as short-term rentals, then you would be, you would be considered in RV park and you'd be required to meet our current code and the code that we are proposing that you adopt. If you want to live in your RV, you can, you can. We allow RVs to be used as regi- residential dwellings in Lewis County. Um, if you're going to be staying on your own property, the cutoff between you camping in an RV and living on your property is sixty consecutive days. You could also live in your RV at a mobile home park, which does not have a time limit. Uh, to summarize, if you want to camp, you can do that on private property or in an RV park. If you want to live in an RV, you can do that on private property or in a mobile home park. If you want to use an RV for short-term rental, you can do that for thirty days or less and you're allowed one. Are there any questions about this slide? Okay.
Uh, Preston?
Yeah.
Do you mean a RV can camp in a mobile home? Do you, is a mobile home park like, isn't that where mobile homes are?
Did I say camp? You, so if, if a mo- if the mobile home park um, allows it, Lewis County allows you to stay in your RV like it's a mobile home, in a mobile home.
I see, but more traditionally, it would be uh, permanently
Ye- yes.
Located mobile homes, but maybe they allow an RV at, at some.
Yeah, and we have, we have several.
Okay.
We have several mobile home parks in Lewis County that allow RVs to stay.
Okay, and then private property, you can live in your RV for under sixty days. Is that?
That's camping. So you can actually live full-time and, but once you exceed the sixty days, you're required to place the RV. So that'd be the same in a mobile home park. You, you come into community development, you get a mobile home placement permit is the actual permit you get. There's a handful of things the building department looks at to make sure that you're compliant. And then on private property, you have a septic system and a well that you hook into.
I see. So I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't, I didn't know this. So what you're saying is I could go in with my, I can go in and get a placement permit for my RV to be placed on, on private property and I could live in it permanently for more than a hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
But it will require, I, I am familiar with uh, placement permits. So it'll require that you have uh, water, septic, no critical areas, setbacks and all those things. So as long as all of that is met, then you will give them a permit and they can do that.
Yep. If somebody wanted to do that, we would look at it like it was a residence. So we would want to know where on the property it's being placed.
Correct.
And all of those other.
Yeah, you do a map. Has anybody ever done it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep. It's very, it's, it's very common.
Okay.
And so is there a certain standard as to the utility connections as far as like sewer and so forth? Does it have to be, you know, hard line versus the flexible hose? I mean, is it just as rigid as a, you know, a modular home that you would place on the property?
Yes, the, as far as, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not, I don't work for environmental health. I don't know Title Eight, which is the septic code all that well, but my understanding is they, they meet the same codes. So whatever the septic code would be for a residence, they have to meet that um, for the RV. Um, I think that the building department considers an RV to be a one-bedroom occupancy. So.
And so we're talking about on a private property, but are you also speaking about private property that has an existing residence on it?
Yep.
So I could go get a permit to move my RV to a uh, property that has a house on it already. And as long as I met the criteria for a placement permit, I could live there. Um, do you know, do we have to have a, a new septic or can we use the home's septic and water system?
So at that point, it's an accessory dwelling unit. Um, accessory dwelling units do not have to share septic. They can. You don't have to share well. You can. Uh, there are certain criteria for what you need to meet if you do either of those things.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So I have a question. You're talking Lewis County. Do cities apply for the same? Or is it city has their own rules?
Cities got their own rules. So I don't, I don't know what the cities do. I mean, I have an understanding, but I don't implement their codes. All right. Any other questions about this one?
I have one more.
Okay.
It, would you describe what a park model is and how the county uh, describes a, a park model? You know, what, what are they labeled?
Um, it kind of comes down to whether it can be an RV or not. So typically that stuff is licensed by LNI. If LNI is, is saying that it meets the criteria for an RV, then we consider it to be an RV. If they're saying it's not, then it's a factory-assembled structure, just like a mobile home that needs to get placed.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, all right. So I think we already switched. Uh, next slide, Ming. Okay. Um, all right. So this slide is from the perspective of a property owner. Um, we actually just covered a lot of this. So, but we'll go back over it again. Um, the rules that you have to follow depend on how many RVs you plan on letting park on your property and how long you plan on letting them stay there. So if you want to let people camp on your property, uh, you, you can do that for free. Um, which means that you are not charging a fee of any kind. You're not accepting donations. It's free. Um, then you can allow any number of RVs for as lo- for as long as they want, as long as you're not exceeding the sixty consecutive day threshold. That's the current Lewis County code. Um, that would allow you to let your friends and family stay on your property for up to two months. It's considered recreation. We don't regulate it. Uh, if you want to charge a fee to people camping in an RV on your property, that you have two options. Um, your first one is if you are only going to have one RV, then we consider that to be a short-term rental. You can rent a short-term rental on your property for up to thirty days. Uh, if it's two or more RVs, then you're in RV park. You need to meet the RV park codes. Um, this is an important reminder. This is actually the only code we're changing. So the only code that's getting changed is the RV park and campground code. Um, what rules apply when someone wants to allow more than two RVs on their property for a fee? Those are the only codes that you guys are actually looking at and adopting. Um, those, both, both of those were about camping. Um, we do have, hang on, I got a slide down here. There was a lot of information on this slide. Um, so those were both for recreational uses. If you want to let people live in an RV on your property, then you have two options. Uh, we just went over them. Uh, first, you can allow no more than two. Cause we consider them dwelling units. And so you can have a main residence and an, and an ADU. Um, the second is if you are going to let three or more, uh, then it's a mobile home park. And those are kind of your two options if you want uh, permanent occupancy on your property. Um, before we move on to some of the other stuff, do you guys have questions about that? I mean, we just went over it. Oh, uh, yes, Eric.
Thanks. For the members of the public, I'm getting to ask the question because I'm Lewis County staff. So sorry about that. But I uh, you've, you've uh, used the fifteen to twenty-five example a few times of that sixty days in one location. But there is another provision in fifteen dot thirty about thirty days in a single location. Um, it's fifteen dot thirty dot oh, three, oh, subsection three. Um, I'm flagging that for you because maybe if you're going to be going a revamp of some of these codes, it's a time to fix that if it's an unintentional inconsistency. It says that RV, RVs and park trailers occupied continuously for more than thirty days have to meet mobile home standards.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Eric. We are going to be discussing occupancy and making a number of changes to the occupancy allowances on private property related to placement of RVs as mobile homes, but we're not talking about it here. So this is not, this diagram is not as nuanced as we will need to get into when we have that conversation. So um, that one is yet to come.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I have a question. First, Preston, is this, did you show us this in a schematic form last time or is this new?
This is new.
This is really cool. This really is helpful to me. So this private property thing, tell me if this is true. So if I have a piece of private property, I can have two trailers on there full-time living sixty days. I can have one on there that is a short-term rental. And everybody else uh, stays for free. Is that really true? All three of those I can have on my property?
Uh, not at the same time, but yes. All three of them are options for you as a private property owner.
Okay, so you can't do what I was trying to say and have them.
Yeah, let me clarify.
Sites there.
Yeah. If, if one of, just like with single-family residentials, if, if you have a single and an ADU, if either of those is offered as a short-term rental, it still counts in, as residential. So you can have two RVs. You can have people living in them full-time or you can be renting one as a short-term and one is full-time. The camping piece, we just don't really regulate. So of course you can let people camp on your property for free. So sorry, that was the, that's the no, you can't do what you just said.
Why, why do you think that somebody thought that we should make a law that you can only rent out a spot on your property for less than thirty days? What, what, what is, what are we solving there? What's the problem that we're solving?
Um, so that's their transient accommodations. And so when they're, when they are being rented as transient accommodations, they fall to the transient accommodations code at the state level, which is thirty days. This is where that comes from.
What do you think that, that, what do you think that they, the state thought that they were solving? Like?
I think the state just thought that they didn't want people staying in hotels and motels and other transient accommodations for too long.
So, so this is, this is comparable to the same rules they're making for hotels.
It, it's, it comes from the exact same code.
And so I guess my question is the same thing on the a hundred and eighty days. Uh, you know, if somebody, if somebody stayed there for six months, what's wrong with, with eight months or a year? I mean, what are, what are we harming? What, what are they fixing by saying, no, you can only stay there for six months?
I, I mean, we're going to talk about it a little bit more um, in the presentation, but really what it comes down to is you're talking about uses and how the uses need to be regulated. And if you want to have a, a park where you let people live full-time and are um, purchasing property or at least leasing property, then it's a mobile home park. And if you are wanting to have a part, an RV park where it's transient and they're not, they're just, they're just renting the ability to use. where it's transient and they're not, they're just, they're just renting the ability to use a campsite for short term purposes. Um, you know, in, in this case, currently county code's six months, but we're actually, we'll, I'll get to it later, but we're proposing seven. Um, you know, it's, uh, that's, it just comes down to the use. So if you want to have full time occupancy, then you're, then you're not an RV park at that point. You're a mobile home park.
Well, I can see if you have, you know, if you're renting out a bunch of spots because number one, um, you know, the county is, uh, while they're not getting any taxes for that rather than single family homes would be taxed. But I kind of did some research to try to figure out where did it ever come out that we can only live there for six months? And I was unable to find anything that directed me to, what was the problem that we were solving?
So, so all numbers are going to be arbitrary, thirty days arbitrary, right? But we need a cutoff between recreational use and full time living. Right? The state needs it and we need it, we need a use cutoff. If you're living in a place for long term, then it needs to be a mobile home park. It needs to meet those codes and those requirements from a life safety standpoint. If, if it's an RV park, it's a recreational use and there must be a cutoff when it's no longer recreational, you are now living there. And that's why there are cutoffs. We can argue all you want about what those appropriate cutoffs are, but we have to have a cutoff between camping and living. Right? RV park camping, mobile park living, different code.
When you say we have to, it's because that somebody has decided that we need to basically.
From a public health, yes, from a public health standpoint, we need to treat those differently.
Okay.
And so we, yes, and from a standpoint of where they are allowed in the zoning code, those should be treated differently. So yeah, we do need to have that threshold, we can argue about what the threshold should be, but there must be a cutoff between recreational use and full time living.
Okay, well, I, 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 I heard you.
Have a point of order first. Hey, Mr. Jones. Thanks for your input and, uh, continue that with that short term rental group up there. Thanks for driving in here, really appreciate it.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but basically what we're doing is, it's kind of the same idea as what we're trying to do with short term rentals. We're just trying to call stuff what it is. If you're living there, it needs to be regulated like you're living there. If you're not, we can regulate it like you're not. Seems to me that the issue we're trying to solve here is that we're trying to tighten up the code so that people can't say that they're not living there when they actually are. And then that brings in all kinds of other health and safety issues, is that, that's basically.
We're actually not solving that right now. We are going to talk about RV occupancy and that particular issue has come up. This is not about that. This is where, when we're going to get to what we're actually doing here, but this is just about RV parks.
Yeah.
And we still need a cutoff.
No, I agree. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm just agreeing with you guys that we're just trying to call stuff what it is so that we can address it appropriately. I mean, that's our big issue with short term rentals now is that people are calling them something that they're not, they're, they're hotels and businesses. Um, so we can call them something else all day long, but that's not really what it is. So it seems like that's basically all we're doing and what, you know, why they're trying to establish these. And you do have to draw on the line in the sand someplace, doesn't necessarily matter whether it's six months or seven months, whatever, but it's got to be somewhere so you can, so you can address it at some point.
Well, I kind of agree, but I, I, I won't debate it right now because it sounds like there's going to be a better place to do it. And I'll take advantage of that time at the, at that time. So Preston, go ahead.
Okay. Um, next slide, Megan. So that was a pretty good segue into, um, what are we, what are we looking at now? So we're only looking at RV parks and campgrounds, which is in that mint green bubble. We're not looking at private property. Uh, we're not looking at camping or living in them. We are not looking at mobile home parks. The rules about private property, camping, living, mobile home parks, all of those rules are not changing. The only thing that is changing is when you become an RV park in our code, which is you offer two or more camping sites for leap, for our, a fee. What does that mean? What standards do you need to follow at that point? Next slide. Okay, so what are we trying to solve? Uh, really, we're only trying to solve one thing, that RV parks and campgrounds should not be processed as a binding site plan like they are today. They should be processed as a special use permit. That's the main basis for this code change. But while we're making the change, we also wanted to clean up the code by removing unnecessary and duplicative rules and make the remaining rules clearer. Staff also decided to add an allowance for cabins and yurts so that there are more recreational options provided. Um, and, and, uh, I forgot to update my notes here, but we also added in a caretaker residence accommodation. Again, this code is trying to solve the permit process, process for RV parks. It's not intended to solve anything else other than what does, what does you wanting to have an RV park look like for permitting? Kind of just said this one, uh, next slide, Megan. I just said this one, we're not trying to solve RV occupancy. Um, we are not trying to solve how you use RVs on private property when it's not an RV park. Um, we are not changing mobile home parks. Do you guys have any questions or move on?
Preston, did you ever, in your discussions there, did you ever talk about the idea of making a classification of an RV park for real short term stays, like, uh, under a week or something? To encourage, uh, people from out of the area to have more available sites to come in and, and wouldn't have to compete with people that are living there for six months. Um, you know, kind of like, uh, uh, like the difference between a recreational RV park and an extended stay RV park is how I started thinking about it.
Sure, so our, um, current code has a distinction between sixty days and a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
Our code does not regulate them differently. So the one that goes for sixty days means that people can't stay there more than sixty days. And the one that goes for a hundred and eighty days means that people can't stay there more than a hundred and eighty days, but they have to meet the same exact standards. So what we did is we just got rid of the distinction between the two and said, if you want an RV park, you can have people stay for as long as you want up to X number of days. It was a hundred and eighty, we'll get into, um, I, well, it's this slide actually, uh, next slide, Megan. So we originally proposed a hundred and eighty because that was where our cutoff was in the current county code. We, um, after our last, um, discussion or last workshop, Mindy reached out to White Pass, the State Park Service and the National Forest Service. Uh, they all said that their seasonal employee timeframe is about seven months. So we are, we proposing that we change that to two hundred and ten days to account for those are the biggest seasonal employee needs in the county. Um, that would also cover your typical, um, harvest season for, um, you know, for farm workers, if they were going to stay in RV parks, that would cover your construction seasons. Um, I know that, uh, a couple of years ago, we had a, we had a construction company reach out because they wanted to do some work. I think that they were supposed to do it over the winter time, actually, which seems like not a time to do roadwork, but that's when they were doing it. They needed a place for their workers to stay, but it, like, seven months covers most working season periods, it seems like, um, across the county, so.
And what is your criteria for moving from one space to the other? Do they have to disconnect and be, uh, like I, I noticed in Yakima County, they had to disconnect and not be in the park for seven days. Uh, one I was told, uh, just had to disconnect from the water for twenty-four hours to be allowed to start that time. What, what'd you come up with for that?
We don't, we don't have a regulation for that.
Okay.
Um, okay, so that was another good, are there any other follow ups to that? Okay, that was a good segue into the next slide. Again, you guys are on it. Um, okay, so I'm sorry, Megan, I meant this slide. I said next, but I meant segue into this one. Um, based on, uh, based on the questions from you guys last time, uh, we are recommending minor tweaks to the rules. Uh, we went over the hundred and eighty days to two hundred and ten days and why we, um, did that. Um, the additional rules that we are adding to the code, these are, again, these are new. Most of the rules that you guys will see in the code or have seen are existing rules. Um, so there's only a handful of new ones. Uh, one of the new rules is to allow cabins and yurts. Cabins and yurts are transient accommodations under the state code, so they fall to a thirty day, um, stay limit instead of the two hundred and ten that we're proposing for the RV park. And then the other one is the caretaker accommodations. Um, so we are proposing this because there's not currently, I, you couldn't do it currently in our code. They would have to stay in an RV and then they would be bound to the same amount of time limit. So a caretaker accommodation would not have an occupancy or a, a time limit. Um, they would count towards the density of the cabins or yurts that you're allowed to have in an RV park. Uh, they would be new cabins or yurts would be limited to one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet. There was, um, some public input last week and we went back and looked at it. Um, we, uh, we added a new section of code to account for existing residences on a property. So if you have an RV, if you want to do an RV park, you have an existing residence, you can use that residence as the caretaker accommodation. Um, and then it would not fall to the, um, square footage restriction of the one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet, if it's already bigger. Do you guys have any questions about?
I forget, was there any restrictions on the caretaker accommodation? Did the caretaker have to, uh, just work there and not pay rent? Or was there any, anything about that? Like, can the caretaker be charged rent?
We, we didn't regulate that in the code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, the, the regulations on the caretaker are that if it's new, uh, so if you're proposing that as a part of the RV park, it, um, counts towards your cabin slash yurt, you know, density limits, which is twenty-five percent of your sites. So it would count as one of those. And then it gets to be a little bit bigger. So cabins and yurts are four hundred square feet. Maximum, your caretaker residence is one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet. Yeah, those were the only two regulations we had on them.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, last meeting, I was pretty vocal about, you know, having some kind of a humanitarian clause where, you know, when we're talking a hundred and eighty day limit, you know, somebody, you know, uh, a couple, one of them has a heart attack at day one seventy-nine, the other is not able to move. You know, that some kind of a variance, you know, be considered, um, as part of the code. Um, is this two hundred and ten days an attempt to, to, to also assuage that concern that I had? Or is this, you know, com, completely separate? I guess I'm still concerned about, you know, the, the occasional person who, who would come through town or through the county, you know, and be staying and enjoying our beautiful area. And then, you know, something tragic happens and, you know, the widow or the widower is unable to, you know, relocate, you know, uh, at the hundred and eighty day mark. And, um, you know, I understand, and we got off into a subject of, you know, enforcement, we don't have the people to enforce it. Someday, somebody's going to enforce it, you know, and, and I would rather see it in law or in, in code so that there is that, that one last thirty day application says, okay, I will find family that will help me move within thirty days. Give me thirty days, but I can't do it in twenty-four hours and we charge them twenty dollars or whatever, you know, it takes to, to administratively make it, make sense. You know, but I'd like to see, you know, some kind of a humanitarian variance option in that, and if that's not, I think last time Mindy said, this is not the time to discuss that. So I guess I'll bring it up one last time, but it's still on my radar. I'd like to make sure it's still on ours. If this two hundred and ten was an attempt to address that perhaps in a different way, you know, then, you know, I would be kind of curious to know that.
Uh, so two things, the two hundred and ten was an attempt to address the concerns about seasonal working and whether six months was enough time. I think it, I think it kind of lends into your concern because we are extending that an additional month. Um, the reality is that we can't write code for the rare exceptions. We need to write code for the, the normal use. Um, for code enforcement issues, code enforcement is going to say, you got thirty days to bring this in compliance or else we're going to go to court. And then they'll go to court and they'll go, Judge, I'm working to try and find a place. And the judge is going to go, you got, I'm going to give you sixty more days. The, the system that code we have in place, just my experience working with code enforcement, which I work with them very closely, is that if somebody is working to try and remedy the situation, they're going to have plenty of time. That's just, that's just the reality. And I am, I do understand why you want the, that type of language in there. Um, I just don't know that it's, it's not necessary because of our, our processes that we have.
And it wouldn't matter how many days, uh, you could have eight hundred days, you could still have the heart attack on seven ninety-nine. So it wouldn't matter how many days you add on there to take care of that problem, I don't think.
Yeah, I was just thinking of, you know, of, of one option to have, you know, that humanitarian, you know, option, but that's okay, I'll drop it.
It seems to me that, and I, Preston, I think you hit on that and sparked it in my head is one thing's enforcement and one thing is, what is the policy? We're writing policy, we're not writing enforcement. And how, whether somebody stays over thirty days or breaks any of these rules. So I think that's where the distinction is, for me, anyway, is the enforcement. We're not writing, and he's asking for enforcement. Could we write a rule, at least that's what I hear, that says you get an extra thirty days and it seems like that's already taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if, I can walk you really quickly through the process, right? Somebody files a complaint with code enforcement. Code enforcement goes out and tries to verify. Code enforcement sends them an NOV if they can verify. That says you have thirty days to correct this. Code enforcement goes back out. If they haven't, then they send them a citation. Then that's an additional, you know, however long before they go into court. If they've remedied it by the time they go into court, then they're going to drop it. I mean, that's just the, that's, that's their practice. The, unless it's, unless it's some huge, you know, crazy thing, code enforcement's going to not, they're not trying to punish people. So they just want to bring people in compliance. I, I, I believe, uh, Commissioner Corbin, that with our current code enforcement practices, it's an, it's a non-issue, unless, except in the most extreme circumstances. Yeah.
Okay, go on, Preston.
Okay. Uh, next slide, Megan. Okay, so this is a reminder about what is and isn't changing. We went over these in detail last time, so these are just a high level reminder. We're not changing where RV parks and campgrounds are allowed. We're not changing the minimum lot size required. We're not changing minimum camp size. Uh, we're not changing the density of campsites when RVs are allowed and we're not changing the septic water and solid waste requirements. Things we are changing, where we're changing the review process. We are changing camper clubs, tent only campgrounds. Cabins and yurts are going to be allowed, lengths of stays, caretaker accommodations. We're adding accessory uses and then we adjusted the screening and buffering for the code. Any questions about, about those changes? Anything come to mind?
Could you remind us what are we changing about the camper club?
We're defining them.
Oh, just defining what it is.
Yep, so camper clubs with this code change would be defined as a master planned resort instead of an RV park.
Okay. So if you had an RV park that you wanted to sell the lots, it would be a camper club?
It would be a camper club, yep. And then they, and then that would be a master planned resort.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next slide. Do you guys have any questions about the code amendments?
I guess since Mr. Hess is here, I'd like to honor that since he came and wrote this up. What is the, uh, he wants two acres and versus two and a half, would you discuss what his concern is?
Um, so the reason we have two and a half now is because when this code was adopted in two thousand originally, growth management said that any lot less than two and a half acres was not rural. So that comes straight from whatever, how the state regulated growth management at the time. That has changed. Um, so now they shifted more to what is your rural character as opposed to hard limits on lot sizes and things like that. So that's why we have the two and a half acres currently. Um, you know, it seems to fit our rural criteria. Um, you know, it's two and a half's pretty small lot in, in, out and unincorporated. in in out in unincorporated Lewis County, where most of our, where, you know, our smallest lot is supposed to be five, unless you're in a lammard. Um so two and a half seems appropriate, but uh I did look at all our neighboring counties and they are two acres.
And uh also Preston, you might um elaborate a little bit more because Lewis County does allow uh clustering and you can cluster down, which is breaking up a parcel into um smaller, smaller lots and one large remainder lot. And the smaller lot, I believe, can go to two acres.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Let me clarify.
We have quite a few.
Our density, our density requirements is our, our typical density requirement, unless you're in a lammard like Packwood, like you guys looked at, you know, earlier, unless you're in a lammard, our our smallest lot is one house per five acres. So if you have a very large lot, then uh like if you have eighty acres and you're in R D D five zoning, then theoretically you can have, you know, uh my math just, my math just went away. Yeah, I picked a bad one. If you have twenty acres in R D five, you can have four houses.
Right, and you can have three of them be two acres.
You can have three of them be on smaller.
Those all the time out in the county. It just, I think the two and a half acres might have been more about addressing whether you can get your septic and your well setbacks and everything on there. And there may be occasion that you need two and a half acres if you have critical areas or something that is not allowing you to utilize the whole acreage. But if you can get it all on two acres, we're making plenty of two acre lots in the Wisconsin.
Y- yes, so yeah, yeah, again, density is, it was a little bit different than lot size. Um you know, sometimes we use them interchangeably, even though we, they're not the same thing.
Yeah.
So it currently says two and a half. Mr. Hess makes a compelling argument that, say, in this case, I could do it on two acres. Couldn't we just leave it two and a half and somebody would ask for a variance or how how would? I'm just wondering why, what some, why it needs to be two acres. I like two and a half, but.
Uh I don't believe that you would be able to ask for variance um from this code. So um if we say two and a half, then two and a half is what it is. Yep.
But we've got time for open comment in another few weeks, so we can hear it then. Thanks.
Yep.
Would there be um, would there be a reason that it would be more uh accessible to property owners? If if we put it down to two, like, do you think there's a lot of property owners that barely can scratch out two that would want to do something like this?
I, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there's a bunch of property that's right on the border of two and two and a half where they want to do an RV park.
Okay, anything else at this point? Are we gonna be touching this again?
Yep, so that's a, that's actually the next slide.
Okay.
Um okay, so we are at the second workshop. Um tonight, you will need to decide if you're ready for the public hearing on the code amendments, or if you would like another workshop. If you have a bunch of more questions um to the proposed amendments, then we should do another one. If you feel like you've exhausted your questions or you're ready to proceed, then we can proceed to the public hearing. Um Commissioner Spoken, I'll turn it over to you for discussion on if you're ready to to proceed.
Uh well, I've got one more question before we go forward, Preston. I I think I sent it in to you and Mindy last time. Uh after the last presentation, I think the way you worded it was that if somebody wanted to have more than one RV on their property, you know, it has to be an R, it has to be a uh what, an RV park, right?
Yeah, so if you, yeah, if you're wanting to offer more than two sites for a fee, then it's an RV park.
And so I I got to thinking afterward, because I I thought, well, then, you know, they can go in and do that. But uh would you explain when I asked you uh how that would work about zoning?
Could you, could you be a little bit more specific?
Yeah, you know, it kind of implied that if they wanted to have more, then they would just go in and and get the permit. But would you put, uh just kind of describe what the zoning, how that would enter in on?
Yeah, so if you were wanting to do something like an RV park or you were doing something that required you to then become an RV park, you do have to be in a zone where it's allowed. Um so if you were not located in one of those zones, you wouldn't be able to to do that. Off the top of my head, uh I don't think we made any zoning changes in terms of where you can and can't do them. So uh the ones where you can't are like our industrial zones. So rural area industrial, small town industrial, um and then let me, I can pull it up.
I was thinking you were gonna look up, like, can we do it in R D D five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And with a septic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you could, it, you could do it in R D D five with a large septic system. You could do it with a central dump station. Um if you want to do that, there's densities involved. If you have a dump, you get less spaces.
Megan, can I share just for a sec? Okay, so this is the existing county code. We're looking at Title seventeen forty-two, Table two. This is the use summary, so you'll see there under lodging and accommodations, B is RV parks and campgrounds. Uh again, this is the existing. So you can see that today, RV parks and campgrounds are special use under R D D five ten twenty, permitted under S T M U, which is small town mixed use, not allowed in small town residential, small town industrial, allowed in commercial, uh crossroad commercial, allowed in freeway commercial, special use in the rural residential center. Not allowed in the regional area industrial and then permitted in park, and I think it's permitted in the TSA as well. So those are the, so we're not proposing to change what is allowed. We are proposing to change, however, the special use permit component of it.
Right, so then no matter what zone you're in, you'd be a special use permit. Like, we went over last time, the table's a little confusing. If you're in small town mixed use, you look at that and you go, oh, I'm just, I'm permitted to have an RV park um outright, which is what the P means, is you don't need to do anything else. When in reality, you have to get a binding site plan, which is basically the same process as a special use permit. Um so what we are proposing, because a binding site plan is not appropriate for RV parks, is to get rid of that piece, but make them all special use permits, so you're still involving that public outreach component that the binding site plan process had.
Okay. Yep, okay. Uh let's see, remind me where we were.
You are discussing on whether you're ready to move forward or not.
Yep, yep. Um and we would be moving forward to the public hearing?
Yeah, so as Preston said, um the thing we want to avoid is starting, going into a public hearing and then having you guys ask us a bunch of questions for an hour before the public gets to testify. If you guys have that many more questions that need to be answered, we shouldn't hold a public hearing. We should hold another workshop. So if you're not feeling comfortable enough to proceed, you need more time with the code and you want more time to ask us questions, we should not move to a public hearing. If you feel like you've exhausted your questions with us, you're cool with where the code is going and you're ready to hear from the public, then we should move to the public hearing. So that's what we're asking you, is where, what are you guys ready for?
Okay, you guys chime in. Frank?
I'm ready for public hearing.
Bob?
I think Preston's done an excellent job and I'm ready for public hearing. Those last couple of slides really, uh that's a real improvement. Thank you.
Okay, Jason?
Yeah, I'm ready for a public hearing.
Kathy?
Absolutely, let's get it.
Gretchen?
Yes, I'm ready to move forward.
All right, sounds like we're ready to move forward.
So the next slide has um the proposed schedule then on it, so we will do notice of hearing on July sixth, that is next week. That is when written testimony may be uh submitted. It should be submitted to staff, so it can either come to me or Preston. Um and then we will hold the hearing on the twenty-fifth. So just a, just a reminder to you guys about about your guys' process. So after the public hearing, you close the hearing. You guys have the opportunity then to ask questions again of staff. So you absolutely could hear things during the hearing that bring up new questions, ask staff. Once you've exhausted at that point, you should make a motion and then deliberate. You are allowed to change what we've proposed to you based on what you hear uh in testimony, right? So um so your choices are always to recommend what we've proposed in its entirety. Recommend that it is not approved at all, like there's the whole yes, whole no that you can recommend. Or you could recommend it approved with to board accounting commissioners with changes. Right, so that is within your guys' authority to do. So I just wanted you to remember that you've got a range of options here. It's not a yes or no. It's a yes, no, or yes with changes. Um and that would come after your motion during deliberations. So I know our, we we keep talking about process because it's, you know, unless if you live in Robert's rules all the time, it's really good to remember how it goes. So so that would be your moment for if if you decide you want to propose any changes to what staff puts forward. Um the the code with revised changes, so the two hundred and ten days and the caretaker accommodations will be out on July sixth for everyone to review.
All right, uh Mindy, is there anything for the good of the order?
Yes. There is. I said no last week, our last time. I just, I'm so proud of myself because I did say no last time. Um we do have good of the order. So what I actually wanted to do is have um Megan, show you guys, we updated a form. So if you go onto our website and you can get to it from all kinds of locations, all kinds of subpages go here to sign up for. But if you subscribe to email announcements, we created, we updated our form. So before, all you could do was put in your email, your first name, and that you wanted it and subscribe. Megan has added a bunch of options for people, so you can subscribe to topics that you might be interested in, so that you're only getting a subset. You can always just, you know, subscribe to all if you want to know every last thing we're doing. Um but like our planning commission, every time we have a planning commission meeting, Megan sends out an announcement to those people who have subscribed to planning commission. Anytime you guys are gonna talk about Packwood or we're gonna have a open house, we do a notification to the Packwood group. Uh we just started the On Alaska Suburban Plan, so there's that one there. I did want to point out that development regulation changes, that's all development regulation changes. We're talking about RV park and campground code, that's a development regulation change. We're gonna bring RV occupancy, that's a development regulation change. So rather than splitting out every single one, if you subscribe to development regulation changes, anytime we're bringing those forward, we would notify, you know, when those meetings are coming and so forth. Uh U G A stuff, urban growth area stuff, rezones, that's under conference of plan updates. So, yeah.
So I'm getting some things. Um if I were to fill this out, to add something or to add a few more things, does that mean I'm gonna be getting, you know, twice as many emails, or does it update my email address and just, you know, send me, you know?
Do you want to answer that, Megan?
Yes, you can sign up for it again, and if you put in the same email, it should just update your preferences. You can also go to any of the emails that you have received, and then at the bottom, there'll be a link that says, change my preferences. And then it'll give you the same screen that you can update.
I think this will be appreciated by a lot of people.
Yeah, we really want people to know what what we're up to, and we want people to engage early in the process. As you guys know, it's not great when the first time someone finds out about something, it's the notice of hearing. In that they haven't had time to digest the materials, they haven't had time to talk to staff, ask questions, they haven't been able to attend workshops. So we really want early notification headed out to the public so they can engage early and often and really feel prepared when it comes to time to come in and provide testimony. A few other things in here, we got bird bands in there. I'm expecting that that one might be the most popular checkbox in our county is notification of burn bands. But yeah, a bunch of fun stuff in there, so really excited about this change.
So I've seen a couple of social media posts. I'm sorry to ask, asking so many questions, but um I think it's social media posts that I've seen talking about, um you know, some some airport uh subarea plans or something there.
You're welcome. I put those out there.
Yeah, well, I read them. And so um our our, since you put them out there, should they be options on this list?
No, because that is not under community development. So actually, it's Public Works that's running the Airport Master Plan Update Project, not us. Um the manager asked me if I would go ahead and share that information, so I'll be hanging posters in Packwood. Um and then I also took their um postcard that they sent out to everyone within a mile radius of the airport, and I put a screenshot of it on a bunch of Facebook pages just to make sure the word really got out there. So um I do that a lot, just throw things out on. And it just goes on my own personal Facebook, which means I have to record it as public record, which is super fun, but whatever. It's a good way to get information out fast, so.
So we don't have to worry about it on the planning commission about the airports?
It's not under our department, so no, we wouldn't notice on that. And like Board of County Commissioners has their own noticing that they do. So every, every time there's a, you know, hearing coming their way, they do notifications, so, yeah.
All right, are there any, anything from the commissioners for the good of the order? Okay, not seeing anything. Uh the next meeting's, oh, July eleventh is canceled. So the next planning commission meeting will be July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And the agenda is a public hearing on the RV park and campground code amendments and a workshop on rural housing alternative. Uh is there anything else for that meeting?
No, there's nothing else. I guess I just wanted quickly to make one reminder to everybody who's still online or in the room. Um these presentations that we just gave will be online for people. And these meetings are recorded on YouTube, so you can always go back and watch them. Or you can send these to other people who are unable to attend as well, and they can watch them on YouTube. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of where they can get what we covered tonight. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Hess for the information. I I can't read it while I'm talking here, but I'll do it after the meeting, as I'm sure most of us will here, so. Uh okay, motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you. That's it for today. Bye-bye.